Late, I think that Kevin and, what's his name? Robert. Were crying over the lost football game this weekend. I wouldn't know why, so I commend the mayor and Jimmy for coming to face me today. After that, Auburn took that licking this weekend. I'm going to get that in before council comments. But we'll go ahead and get started. We'll just jump right into budget discussions. And I just asked Jill or the mayor if you have anything in particular you wanted to point to today. Maybe, I know that we have a new handouts. If you want to tell me, is there anything in particular that changed on this?
The front two pages are the edits from when we met with Councilman Conyers and Councilman Brown last week. So, we can go through these edits. In the general revenue, let's see. It was brought up about the expense in the, can you hear me? Trash, in the garbage cans. And what we didn't put is the corresponding income on the top, if you want to go to Public Works, under sanitation. Because we are going to, we're proposing that we charge the cost of the garbage can when you receive service, new customers. And then it was recommended by the recycling committee, newly created recycling committee, that we give away recycled bins. And so that net expense is, really the revenue makes that almost a flush, except for the recycle bins. General fund expenses. This is, we went through all of the personnel last week, and I think the list, is that in here? The personnel? If you want to look at that. Page forty-three.
That's where the positions start. So, that seventy-seven thousand, six oh four, that's in the mayor edits. Y'all remember when we met in the Civic Center, there were a few positions in there that we had decided at the time we didn't need. It was kind of a last-minute decision, so we didn't, those numbers were not reflected in the budget that was submitted. So that's what this is doing here. It's taking it out now. And I tried to put notes on pretty much everything, so y'all could see.
And so Jill, all, since these are strictly salary numbers, you have all of the, all of the overhead that goes along with that?
Yes.
In each department, too.
Right. If you'll see that, like the payroll.
Benefits.
Right, yeah. The payroll taxes and the retirement, those are the corresponding ones that agree with the, that go along with the cuts for the salaries. I didn't mess with the medical insurance at all, because it was a position here and a position there. So I didn't mess with the medical insurance. I left it as is.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to nail it anymore.
Right.
It is what it is. Close to it. Jimmy, is there anything in particular you want to point out on that?
Just on the positions or just on?
Yeah, I guess just while we're on that, yeah. On those, we'll go back post first two pages.
We spent about three hours on this last week, and it was pretty much just personnel. So, all of those are in here.
Did add a column to the end that says council edits. Let's see that.
Well, not to bring up a real subject that brings up some debate, but I will. I see a note down here, it says three percent increase of total city salary.
That, I just marked through that. I don't, I don't know how that, I don't know. Oh, yeah, that, that is correct. I was thinking about this one over here. So the three percent on the city and the nine percent for the utilities.
What I sent to all council, too, was the full-time employees, year by year, and how they move up. And we know that we had more jobs in 2018 budget, but then in the end, you can see, I don't have it in front of me, but I sent that to everybody, that it never really changes that much, for whatever reason. So, I think there were just always kind of in the middle of replacing someone, or, you know, for whatever reason, at the end of the year, the number of full-time did not change much in 2018. And we know that we've hired everybody, and we put in a lot of new positions. So, I just went over that, just as an FYI. I can't explain it, and I didn't research it, but that was the reality. And we had less this time.
I think the one change that I remember discussing on the, on the positions that I don't see out here was the police captain position.
That's because when, after we talked, y'all said that y'all would consider it, because the net increase I explained would not be, after you do the shifting around.
I mean, I think I remember saying that I wanted to wait until the time we, we had everything finalized.
We still would keep it in the budget. I mean, just, it might not be the full year, but you would still need to keep it, because it's not going to be until next fiscal cycle, before you make the chief permanent, and look at the possible other shifting around. And we can't really shift around until that position's made permanent.
I wouldn't be in favor of funding it.
And I don't think Councilman Brown was. I mean, I'm just reiterating. I would, I would leave it out, and we can add it.
Is it a monetary thing, or?
We could add it later.
Because in the end, it won't be because of people shifting around at a lesser salary. We put on there that the net increase would be twenty, but, and the reality wouldn't be, it would be less that.
It's not money. I'm just not in favor of the position. I think that it works well with several lieutenants, and they're equal, and their duties are prescribed. And when we had four lieutenants, and from talking to Chief Pettis, he was always happy with that. And talking to Chief Hollinghead, she's indicated to me that she's happy with that, that current system, and that she didn't believe it was necessary. And so just upon her advice, I don't, I just don't think that the position's necessary. I'd rather let her change her mind and come back and ask for it than to budget a position that could be filled, when not in favor of it right now. That's just my thoughts.
And like I said, I looked at all other municipalities, and, you know, when you have a big department, just like Public Works, you know, you have an assistant who is there to, you know, help facilitate everything, and then someone, you know, in that, in that role that is doing the vision and, and the management overall, it's, you really cannot find another municipality that doesn't have a chief, either a captain or an assistant chief. Because going from that to three lieutenants, they're not the assistants, they're in charge of departments. So, it's something that I definitely believe we need.
Is the special events coordinator for the police department listed here? I don't.
And I went over that in detail also.
It was on page forty-three.
The bill logistics.
Okay, so is this, now, I'm sure, I do see a note over there, so that says promote from within. So we're going to be promoting somebody to do that, and then hiring someone to fill whatever?
She's, she's already doing it, basically, and, you know, the position is an assistant to investigation, but she does way more than that.
So, so is it a new position you're creating, or are you just changing the title and changing pay?
Well, right now, she felt like she could do it all, but I don't, I think you need to keep that position open, even if you don't fill it this year. I don't want to overwhelm somebody. I want to pay somebody for what they're actually doing, and...
I don't mind that, but I'm, just like the captain's position, a little adverse to, to funding a position, that I'm not really comfortable creating a whole nother position. I would readily vote on that position if somebody that's currently in the department undertakes that, and then pay them what, what they deserve. But creating a whole nother position in the budget for that, I mean, so the difference is the increase in pay, rather than a whole nother police officer position.
Well, everything that's in here, if it's new, we haven't adjusted anywhere else. We're not, we're keeping those open, unless it says promotion, there's a net. And you'll see a net increase when there's not, you know, another position that's going to be filled. So everything is in the budget, the way, the way it is right now. And we are, like I mentioned, full-time employees. Seems like at the end of the year, for whatever reason, it doesn't go up that much. And we are, if you look at the page with the edits, back to the front, it is on the front?
Yes, just, so just saying, if this just says net increase, there is not another position, a replacement position in this budget.
Well, it's, it's, in other words, we're not, if it's going to be filled, it's in the budget.
Right.
Okay.
Right, it's still, it's in the budget.
We're only showing increases. And then when you look at the big overall budget, here. Page five, you can see, and this we got to have to explain, too, but she deleted, just to make room for all the columns. You can see the council edits. This was the three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, this is everything.
Yeah, that's...
Is that right?
The total expenditures that the council cut.
Right. And this is just for the city, so it doesn't include the cuts from revenue from utilities. But this affected less of a transfer from utilities, and you can see where the utility subsidy went down from one point seven to one point two million. And it is just a remarkable recovery. So, it's, that's really what I want y'all to look at, is how far we've come. And this is, you know, adding positions where it's necessary, because a lot of the things that we're adding are creating more efficiency and better services.
For the utility positions, all utility positions, has there been provisions made to show that the labor cost adjustment factor has been implemented, so that there's really no net increase? Well, the revenues will offset the expenses of utility department employees every year.
Well, we, when we met, I can't even remember what date it was now, was it Thursday?
I think it was thir, Wednesday.
Wednesday. At the end of the meeting, I think it was Councilman Brown that said, I want to, I'd like, he said, we can put the fees in there. I asked to put, keep the fees, the increases for utilities, and then take out the rate...
I think it was only for sewer.
Right, we kept sewer.
But I think we were not going to do any of the increases for electric.
Fees, not, not rates.
Okay.
Like fees for hookup and things like that. So, and then put in a cost adjustment for personnel, that's not in here.
Okay. I mean, that's by ordinance, and I don't know that that's been implemented.
Right, well, we have...
And part of, that's me to blame for never circling the wagons with Richard.
He, you know, put this together, like I said, today.
But I mean, it's, it's an ordinance. It's like an automatic, every year. It's not even, you don't have to come to council. Jill, just automatically, whatever that number changes by.
AMEA will cover that study, to get the exact figure for us. They reimburse us for it. So we will put that in.
Do I now?
The rate, the, is it called the?
Labor cost adjustment.
Labor cost adjustment.
Permission to speak?
Yes.
Labor cost adjustment, I don't think AMEA has anything to do with that. That's more of a levelized billing account that builds over the course of the year, since power fluctuates over time. They bill us the same amount, and they set that rate a little bit higher than what they hope the average is going to be. So we get a little buffer built into that account. And I think it's been about five hundred thousand dollars the last couple of years. But the labor cost adjustment is, it's a kind of a complicated formula, in that, you know, what historically is done is, it's just been prorated across the rate for usage. There's a base charge associated with, you know, rates, and then there's usage rates. And some of those usage rates are sometimes staggered, so the front-end usage is a little higher than the rear-end use, so the large users don't get penalized necessarily by paying the same amount for the commodity. Because, you know, once the commodity is, all the base cost of providing that commodity are taken care of, then you just have the production cost of that commodity, and so you want to give the break for those higher end users. But anyway, what I have done in terms of additional labor, is we looked at a tech assistant that would be somebody that could do some inspection work for, somebody that could be the front end on some of these projects, in terms of what utilities are available, and how they would be managed in terms of the project. And then we looked at additional workforce in gas. We've got a lot of annual maintenance requirements that we continue to fall behind on. I think right now, we're behind just in running services and trying to catch up with that, so we're, we're falling further behind on our annual maintenance. So we're looking at three additional people in gas. We're looking at three additional people in wastewater, because of the rehabilitation work we're going to be taking on, and some of the structure we're going to have put in place to...
I want to add this real quick. On the tech position, and I explained to Councilman Conyers and Brown that that's not in here, but we're adding it after we get a comp study and a job description, because Councilman Brown said he did want that in here. And that was that explanation I told you about, the inspection part of it.
That I used on the, on the water, wastewater and gas techs, I used a job grade of a sixteen, job specification sixteen, and the middle rate for that, which added, I think, about thirty-two thousand dollars per position. And then I added a prorated amount for the retirement and the health insurance, and all the administrative benefits that we get with employees. And I based that on the factor of our total labor cost to administrative costs from the last previous year. So I divided the administrative cost, and I had a one point three five, I forget the percentage number, but I multiplied. So, and so then what I did is, I took the labor cost and administrative cost last year, I added that number to that amount for this year, and I used the labor cost adjustment formula. And like, you know, and I dusted off the old spreadsheet we did before. And so there's options in that where you can just strictly do base charge. And when you look at this sheet, you'll see that, you know, for, for example, on the electric, for the residential electric, the base charge is nine twenty-two, that it would go up to nine forty-two, i- if you just did the base charge. And then for gas, it would go from eight ninety-six to ten twenty-nine. And that's a higher increase, because we're adding more labor cost to the gas.
Let me go back to, for Jimmy and Jay's sake, and, you know, we've talked this, about this for three years now. I'm going to go back, if I may, give you a real quick review on that. The thoughts were, and this will be to one of your points, Mayor, several years ago, was that the city would add employees, the city would give employees raises. And I'm only talking strictly the utility department now, okay? Because it only applies to the utility department. And there's a reluctance on the part of politicians to raise rates. You're reluctant, you are, I am, we're all reluctant to raise rates.
I'm not.
But if we continue to give, if we continue to give raises, and we continue to add people, you have to, you have to pay for it. And you pay for some of it through...
Growth.
The growth. But sometimes, you don't always recoup what, what you put out additional. So, the thought was, we don't have a taste for recovering all these expenses, we'll put in this labor cost adjustment factor. And we went through several consultants, and it's been done, and we studied all this. And so we implemented, several years ago, what was called this labor cost adjustment factor. And without going through it, like Richard said, it's a pretty complicated factor, which includes base rates and fees and this, and it's, it's fairly complex, but once you go through it a few times, it's just not terribly difficult, because you, and you only do it once a year. And it's just one little, you know, I say complicated, but it's just one equation. So if your expenses were for employees' salaries, for, across the board, let's just say, were a million dollars, and the next year they were a million and fifty thousand dollars, then your labor cost adjustment factor, and that fifty thousand would include salaries, benefits, and everything else, would, would take care of that additional expense through revenues. And if you pass the ordinance, you don't ever have to worry about falling behind, behind, because we have fallen behind, because that wasn't implemented for a long time. Rates stayed stagnant, which consumers are really, really happy about, and politicians are real happy about. But the infrastructure starts falling behind, because you didn't keep up with it. So this was intended to help out with that. And I know for the past two years, what I've cautioned is, being so reliant on it, that you, you could potentially add more people than you need, because you just go, Jay, we'll give you forty people, we'll recover the cost of the labor cost.
We are not adding more, believe me. We're asking bare minimum.
I'm making up an absurd number, because you could, it could be abused, and just say, we don't really care how many people we hire, we're going to have somebody look at every dial, because we count that. You don't want to do that. So that's the danger of having that. But the benefit is also, is if you're, if you're down employees, that factor, it's theoretically can be a negative number. So I just, I say that, because when you look at, and we're talking about positions, especially when you're talking about utilities, it's, it's not, it shouldn't, it's designed to, not to be a drain on, on the budget. Now, general government, you know, we're collecting more property taxes, we're collecting more automobile taxes, more lodging taxes theoretically, although I hear it's gone down a little bit. That takes care of what we need in Public Works and sanitation, and city employees, like Finance Director and Treasury Department and stuff like that. So, I want to just kind of revisit that. I think it is absolutely imperative that we include that labor cost adjustment factor. In fact, it's not even supposed to be debatable, unless we change the ordinance. It's, you know, it's supposed to be implemented.
Well, let me ask, is the formula established in the ordinance, that this is the formula to use?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, here's the ordinance, and that's the formula for it, I think item C on there. And the biggest issue I've got, trying to go through there, is it defines base revenue requirement as one of the factors that you compare your, your potential new revenue, or new expense for labor, compared to last year's expense for labor. But it really doesn't define what's included in the base revenue requirement, because, you know, you have power costs, you have facility costs, you have all sorts of other base revenue requirements that, they can change, too. And if you, if you don't lump all of that into that base revenue requirement, you know, you also have additional customers that increase the base revenue. And if you don't have it all put together, you're just raising rates to raise rates, versus being able to raise rates to serve a purpose, which is to make sure you have enough money to not only include your, your labor costs, but all of your operating expenses, as well as your capital improvement. And I think that gets back to this cost of service study that we're talking about, trying to implement in, in all these departments. So we can establish a more defined structure, as, as to, how much do we want to charge everybody for what it costs us to do our business? Whether we sell any utility or not, we're still going to have some people that are going to be maintaining the systems and doing things. And then as you start to get to where, okay, well, how much of that allocates to your base charge, and how much of it allocates to, you know, the first ten percent of everybody's usage, or the first twenty percent of everybody's usage? So you're fair. And, and the purpose of doing all that is to make sure we have a fair allocation of costs, so that the, the individual residential customer isn't necessarily being supplemented by the high-user commercial customer. But, and you're never going to be completely fair, but, but you can look at everybody, you know, when they ask you about your rates, and say, yeah, this is how we charge y'all, and, and it's fair, because we have these numbers that, that validate it.
And to give you an example of what some of those numbers look like, I think the last time Richard and I sat down and attempted to run through that equation...
Right, yes.
The numbers are like point three, point five percent, point seven, there might be one, one of them might have been like one point, it was one of them kind of, like one and a half percent.
And you calculate it differently for each utility?
So, yes.
Okay.
And that's what I did. So I put three in for wastewater, one in for water, three in for gas, and I just, I didn't put anybody in for electric, because we haven't got to that point yet. But I did allocate twenty thousand dollars of the technical support guy, the tech, through all departments. So I got an eighty thousand dollar accounted for in the total of the four departments. And so when you do all that, though, and this is what it gets back down to where this, if you look at the far end, the new base rate would, you know, as I was saying before, for water, for instance, would be ten sixty-three, as it is now, versus ten eighty-three. So you lose twenty cents. Wastewater's going to be the biggest one, because we're having the most employees added for the least revenue generating service. And that goes from a thirteen seventy-four base rate to a fourteen ninety-two. And then you decide, well, do we want to go ahead and say, okay, well, you know, the rate increase we talked about before was to say, instead of offering two thousand gallons as part of your base charge, you just give a thousand gallons as part of your base charge, then everybody pays the extra thousand gallons worth of usage, which...
You're selling two thousand gallons to everyone.
And that's, and that's just a different rate concept, but it accomplishes the same goal. And, and no matter if we go the, the base rate route, or some combination of base rate and usage, with, with the labor cost adjustment, you know, applying, once we get the cost of service study done, then we'll have a better feel for where these rates ought to be moved, in terms of being fair to all the customers.
Can you on that LCA get within ten percent, based on data that you have now, though? And based on new employees in every department? I mean, you know, it's, you're trying to hit a moving target.
Right.
So, I mean, you just got to pick a baseline.
That's right. And these, I think what we're talking about here...
And do your best, and get within ten, ten fifteen percent.
Right. And I think these are, these numbers here.
There have also been positions that have been defunded, and you're trying to put a couple of them back in.
But you know, in the process of talking about rates, and we, we want to benchmark against other utilities. We want to, we want to see, you know, where we compare, and we're not trying to do that so we can charge as much as we can. We're just trying to do that to make sure we're not charging too much, and if we are, we need to figure out what's wrong with us, you know? But right now, I would say, from my, you know, view of other rates, we're, we're below average in water and wastewater. Gas, we're a little below average, and electric, we're, we're right there on target, for the most part, but a little bit over when you get to higher-usage customers. And that's just where we break down. I mean, that's just where it is. But when we do a cost of service study, we'll be able to analyze, you know, where should all these customers be, and then how would they fall into, you know, rate comparisons to other utilities, whether they be local Baldwin County utilities, or statewide utilities, or regional utilities.
And the cost of service study is reimbursed by AMEA.
And another thing, right, the other thing that you can do for this LCA is, you don't, you don't have to recalculate it every time you hire somebody, or somebody retires, or somebody resigns.
Right.
Because then you'd be calculating it every three, four weeks. So you do it, you do it.
Right.
you do it, maybe every four months, every four to six months.
I don't even think you do it, I think that every couple of years, is what I ask.
If you did it now, then you'd be increasing rates for maybe ten people that hadn't been hired yet, and that wouldn't be fair necessarily to the consumer, and I want to do it.
I think it would all come out pretty close to the wash.
Derek Lee, he said they do theirs every couple of years. But, I mean, if we were to put in for a lot more hires, because of all the infrastructure upgrades, then I would recommend doing it again next year. Just depends on where you are.
It needs to be done, if we're not doing it, it, it has to be, not even needs to be done, it has, it's required.
Right, I think that
Is that something that you and Richard Peterson can sit down and calculate and agree to what that labor cost adjustment factor is?
Yeah.
Prior to us passing the budget?
He even said that that's missing a lot, though.
Well, the, the simple question
Well, he said he could get within ten or fifteen percent of the adjustment.
Of just for personnel, that, that calculation does not include other overhead.
But if he can get within fifteen percent of a number, we're talking about a half a percent change, and within fifteen percent of that number, it's a pretty small
If, if we can get it done by an entity that does this, and we get reimbursed for the cost, I say, let's do it that way.
And we'll have the study done for the electric, now, AMEA's not gonna reimburse us for the gas, water, wastewater, but they'll reimburse us for the electric.
You can do it then for the, for the others, but I think that, as long as we can get reimbursed, it's not gonna cost us anything.
It's only, it's not a, Richard, what does it take you to do one for a department? A couple of hours?
Yes.
No, it's only a couple of hours for a department.
Jimmy, can I see that? Because, speaking of how often
That's the ordinance, and, and this is a copy of the labor cost adjustment from the template that I made on the spreadsheet, and, and I, you know, won't say it's perfect, but, and it needs some tweaking, but if you can pass that. And, and it's got the existing base rate, and it's got what the new base rate would be if we just strictly based the increase on changing the base rate.
Well, and the reason I wanted to look at this, is because we're sitting here debating as to how often it should be done, I'm just curious, is did the ordinance say how often it should be done?
I don't know that.
He's got it now, Jay's got it.
But the biggest thing is defining, defining what the base revenue requirement is, that's gonna be the biggest challenge to making it, because if we're adding new customers and adding new revenue, it really doesn't factor that in as much.
Jay, I don't know that it'll say in there, if you do get all of it, I think the intent was at least once a year, was the intent.
Yes, it just says the base rates may be adjusted periodically to account for permanent, permanent changes in labor-related revenue requirements.
It just seems like doing it at the time you're doing the budget would be the appropriate time to adjust it.
Yeah, well, here's the rest of that, that periodically to account for permanent changes in labor-related revenue requirements that come about as a result of budget actions taken by the council for a fiscal year. So, it seems, based on this, that it would be in response to budget actions in a fiscal year, so it seems
But I think you wait, and then you pass the budget, and then you calculate it, because that kind of fixes the, what the budget's, what you're expecting to spend that year, right?
I mean, yeah, I mean, but, I mean, I get your point, that it would be premature to base it for positions you're not filled, but I think that's the point, is, you know,
Right. And anticipation, if, if positions are approved
Yeah, once they're approved
I think you do it right after passes of the budget.
That's what I would say, yeah, but that's when you calculate it, based on the anticipated filling of those new positions.
All right.
I can send you those spreadsheets, and you're welcome to play around with them, and then I can also document the, the added revenue expenses for labor that I included in each utility, and, and what those stand for.
I'm laughing, because I'm sitting here thinking about the people that are watching this on the live stream, and how exciting listening to this must be, discussion of
Especially since there's no display of what we're looking at.
And it's shocking, you know, how many people I run into that say they watch these things, and this particular discussion has got to be just the most exciting that we've had in quite some time.
Maybe they're trying to go to sleep, yeah.
Makes me want to just go ahead and get y'all to pass the budget, so we don't have to have them anymore.
You might be right.
So, anything else on those first two pages, Jimmy or Mayor, that you talked about?
I mean, just, the, the one was the police department, I think where we landed was removing the captain until later date, and then, I think Robert, Robert and I both were on board with the event logistics.
Okay, well, that makes two of you. I mean, I'm just saying that
Right, right, I understand, I think that was our thought, was go with that one, but scratch the other.
When you say on board with the, just so I
The event logistics, and I don't want to speak for Robert, since he's not here.
But is that for, for just a promotion to that, or for, for creating a whole new position?
It's, it's a promotion, yeah.
I think it was a promotion, is how
Yeah, I mean, the way this is written, and based on the things we talked about, since it says net, if, if it was just, if it was a whole new position, it would have the entire, it would have to have the entire salary, and if this is just a net increase, the only difference is the promotion. Right.
Well, not necessarily, because if it's a promotion, the other position is in the budget. And I'd have to look and see if there's any that are not.
Right.
I think there are some, if you can look at it.
Like, it's, it's already worked into the budget, it was already there
But do you want to give them, like, an example of?
And, and some of those positions are in the utilities that I didn't include in the, in the rate adjustment, because they're already budgeted from last year, we just happened to lose, you know, like the limo loss, or the wastewater operator, and actually the two superintendents too, we just haven't, we're looking to promote some folks, but we're not really looking to fill that position.
Fill the vacancies.
Here's one, dispatch supervisor.
And that's what makes the labor cost adjustment even more difficult, because until you get the numbers at the end of the year, it's just hard to know.
And, and Richard, that, that brings up a good point, is one of the things the mayor said, and, and I'm sure it's in here, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding it right, is that she said that there were some positions in utilities that were defunded that we want to bring back, and I'm guessing two, two of those would be the superintendent that have, that were taken out?
We're, we're looking for more technical assistance type folks, and that would be more in SCADA and in mapping, and we talked about that, and be more technical services, so that they can support all the utilities, and we can, you know, gain, you know, if, if we can have a technically capable individual that can help us implement SCADA software, can do extra mapping work for us when we need it, and then get involved with helping support engineer design on new subdivisions, that, that would take a load, and, and that person can transition some, perhaps, in the public works on occasion too, and, you know, it, it's just the support we need.
So, look at page forty-five, if we want to go through that, do you have what we're looking at, so you can be on the same page?
No, sorry, no, I don't.
Yeah, we have, we have it set up.
Okay, so one of the things we'd be bringing back, the Assistant Electric Superintendent?
Yes. But that's just a promotion? That's not a new position?
Oh, yeah, it says net increase.
But, I mean, well, the position is new, but the person wouldn't be.
Well, it's
It's new, it's new because it was, right. It's new to this budget, because it was not in the last one.
Right. And it has just the net.
Got you.
Well, so, if there's someone promoted from within, and their position has to be filled?
Well, that's what Richard said, we wouldn't necessarily be filling it.
This is the assistant, we're talking about the Assistant Electrical Superintendent, being filled with somebody from within is a promotion, the electric superintendent was still funded from last year.
Right.
Well, what I'm saying, though, if you do that, because, let's just say Jay is an lineman, and he gets promoted to that position, now you have a lineman position is open. I'm just using your name, because you're sitting there. So, so that position's open, does that old position need to be defunded, because it's not needed?
In, in this particular case, probably so. Because they will fill the role of partially what that position entailed, but the tech support we're trying to get will help fill the, the voids that will be left and what that
And then my concern is, is just, it's obvious, is that, you know, we don't want to create a vacuum, where then those positions, if somebody gets promoted, gets, we decide later that, okay, that we didn't expect it in the budget, but now we have an open position, and now that, whatever that position is vacated to be promoted, is now, because we created a new position
But I don't think the salary is appointed for it.
Okay, well
Yeah, because we're only budgeting a net gain, we're not budgeting the entire portions, so it wouldn't be enough to cover
Right, we're not asking for, we're not asking for a new person
I'm not sure in this, but in this case, if it, it's probably already in the budget for that too, but it just could be defunded. I'm saying, what you're looking at right now is the most.
I think it makes sense now.
I'm telling, I mean, it is the most, because, I mean, she has to assume a lot too, she's not taking anything out, but more than likely, there's some things that need to be taken out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would make sense if there's a mechanism, and I don't know if there's an easy way, that once that person goes in there, if there's just a note
Right, I think we can do that next year.
Their salary's now included in that Assistant Superintendent.
I think we can do that next year, because every year we add a little bit more that, well, I didn't think of that.
Well, and, and we've started working on organization charts too, so, you know, and, you know, and there's a complete structure of the department from, you know, the, the individual departments, and then each individual department has a different, you know, organization structure. And then we're looking at those departments in terms of personnel, and we're looking at, you know, right now, we can look at this organization chart and see that, you know, if this is our five-year plan, and, and we're short three or four people on, in electric, for example, then over the next five years, we want to try to get to that point. And so, that's what the purpose of this is gonna be.
Is that in their book?
And we're, we're looking to, and I don't know if y'all need to submit this, or if y'all would like to look at that, or whatever, but
He did this earlier in the year, so
If you got a copy, sure.
I've got one copy that's in color, and I can, I can, I can email those to everybody, though, too, so I will do that.
Because that's, that's not what's in the budget, but that is where we'd like to be.
That would be our plan to be where we need to be in the next five years, if not sooner. Depends on how generous we feel at the time, you know.
How long does a, a person remain a gas service line tech trainee?
Two to five years.
Oh, that long, huh?
Mm-hmm.
What's the next step, what's, what's the
Gas service tech one, and then probably gas, and that's the other thing we're trying to do with, with the organization chart, now we're gonna start looking at job descriptions that allow, you know, growth in each of these job descriptions, so if you have a gas service tech, everything will start with a trainee, and then there'll be a tech one, tech two, tech three, but, and, and then you get to, you can have crew leaders, you can have CDL license, you know, requirements, you can have other qualifications with master plumber or apprentice plumber, and all of those credentials should give people an opportunity to, to expect and anticipate more pay. And, and if, if we can get it to that point, and, and some of these budgets, you might, you know, you may see that we will have, in terms of merit increases, there may be an extra lump sum amount, and that would be to, to take care of the people who have desires and goals to reach certain credentials over the course of that year. And we'd just like that to be something automatic. We've got one fellow in the gas department that got a master gas fitter, like, almost a year ago, and we, we just haven't been able to do anything for him, because of the, the way the budget system works out, and, you know, so, and, and a merit increase, or even a cost of living plus merit just isn't enough to reward somebody for becoming a master gas fitter. And we just, I mean, that's just how we need to be, and, you know, that's part of some of the issues we have, with people wanting to look at other places, and I mentioned that last time we talked, there were people who have left for better wages. And, you know, well, I'd like to think that people would come to us for better wages at some point in time, and I, I would like to think that's how we can get to, over, you know, some period of transition, when, when we all feel good about the, the organization structure, and, and what we're able to accomplish with the people we have.
And the thing is, not just pay, looking at just the overall compensation, because you have to work here, how many years to get an increase in vacation?
Ten.
Ten years. I mean, you know, the, these things are important to people too, so it's just looking at the whole package, to be competitive.
But I appreciate y'all, I appreciate the time you're spending in doing this, and I know it's difficult, you know, I, I hope you think that, that everybody in our departments, and, and the other departments with us here, we're not here to squander anybody's money. I mean, we're here to, to provide the best service we can, and, and recognize there's limits to all of that, and that's, that's what our goals are, and it shouldn't be hard to do.
Well, I was gonna mention too, about positions and promotion opportunities, it's hard to think of all of those things at budget time, and I think we should just, as we come across these things, talk about it while it's happening, because it's, it is, it's almost impossible to, to think about, and it would be too late, I think, if you saved everything to the end, so we're just gonna have to, to all of us
And even things that we started planning in June have changed, you know, I mean, there's pumps that are going out that we need to get replaced that now, and we didn't think they were gonna go out in June, but, and, and there'll be more pumps that'll go out in December, it's just the way it is, the wear and tear, and, and how we're able to put in a line item for that type of work in here, that we don't have to worry necessarily about whether it's an emergency, and whether we have to get it, or whether we can go through the process of getting it, you know, I mean, it's just, makes things easier if we have some allowance for that too. And, and we'll, we'll try to help get, you know, the explanations and, and the situations that arise, that allow us to, to have the opportunity to, to do this thing, or reach out and, and order something we need, and, and y'all feel comfortable of us being able to do that.
So, Mayor, let me ask you this, there's, you got thirty-four full-time positions you're requesting, six part-time, you look at utilities, and there's really, if you take out the, you know, four of the fourteen, or, or promotions from within, there's really only ten positions in utilities out of all the departments that are being requested. So, that brings us back to thirty in the general government. I want to look all the way ahead to the following year, what's that year gonna look like? We, we can't grow forty people a year.
But, like I mentioned in that, and that's what I have to pull up, when you look at the full time at the end of the year, I mean, you remember
It ebbs and flows, and you may hire thirty, but you may lose some to retirement, or
Because we had that in last budget too, and it's still, and we have hired, made those hires.
But what's budgeted, though?
But if, I think, what we discussed was if she went with
Two thousand eighteen was the same way.
If we had a net thirty new positions, we wouldn't end the year with net thirty new
We didn't in two thousand eighteen, I don't, we hired all the new positions, and, like I said, I don't, I, I emailed
Well, let's say we did, let's say we did increase by forty people, I'm gonna look toward to the next year, we expected to add forty people the next year too?
I would say
I mean, I know we're growing, I'm not saying we wouldn't add any, but I mean
I would say you wouldn't add that many.
We're not growing at nine percent a year, like our, if our employment's growing at nine percent a year.
I would say if you, if you added forty or thirty positions, and then that number was that net at the end of the year, I would think you would not add that same number to the following year.
Well, but I think one of the things you gotta look at, when you figure, if you're basing it on growth, you have to look and go back ten years to see if we have grown fifteen to twenty percent in, in employees, basically, like we have in
Well, that's the reason I asked Mayor, because that's one of the things that she's been saying for two, two years, is our population has boomed, and our number of employees has been pretty stagnant.
About the same.
So, if we make a big step to catch up, are we catching up, or are we gonna see this again next year?
Well, like I said, the, when it, when it's flush, I think it's, it's a combination of when somebody retires, or leaves for, for whatever reason, we're looking at that position at that time to figure out, how can we do better? And I think in some cases, we have been able to redefine that, and even with some of these that I explained to you, it says ten new positions, but there are some of these where it's a new position, but we're not filling another, I mean, that's really what we have to look at too.
Well, I would not count any of those in which the net increase was in full salary, I subtracted those.
Okay.
Well, then you got three, and you got three of those that are stories, which are not included, or shouldn't be included, because
Uh, wait, I'm not sure, that may have actually been the note that said they weren't included.
It's just saying that five of them are PD, not included.
Well, and in the utilities case, it may become an issue of, of what, what your expectation is for our level of service, I mean, you know, we have a level of service expectation is for our level of service. I mean, you know, we have a level of service expectation that dictates we have a certain response time to new customers.
In the new position.
And, and we have.
Not including.
Technology we have to start to look at in terms of the SCADA system and the mapping system and we have to decide, I mean, you know, do we want to continue to integrate that technology into the way we operate the system and is that going to help us save money over the long run or is it, is it just keeping up with technology? Because that's what everybody demands.
Yeah.
I mean, once you get, you know, you start down the trail of all that, it, you, you, and, and even in terms of how we communicate today, you know, we, we're kind of victims of the technology that's evolved with social media or, or, you know, with the way technology works. It's just, you, you almost can't be without it. The way we read meters, the way we bill people, the way we allow.
Some of it's a luxury though. Some of it is still a luxury.
Yeah, but.
We want to be high-tech, but you can get into IT where it's just to make somebody's job easier that may or may not be necessary. And, and, and some of this does become a luxury.
And some of it becomes regulatory related and, and it's almost like you're forced to because of regulations.
That's our job is to ask these tough questions because, you know, we want to make sure we, we trim the fat.
I have a tough question for you. I've got, the scouts are coming down to the wastewater plant to look at it this afternoon. Jimmy, I think you've turned.
That's today or?
Yeah, that's the regular meeting day. So I'm going to go down and meet them if that's, if, if I can do that.
I think you should.
And we're looking forward to it.
They'll enjoy it. They're a good group. They ask a lot of questions.
We've got a microscope waiting for them with a lot of bugs underneath. So we're going to see how that, thank y'all.
Thank you, Richard.
I mean, does anybody else look at those numbers like me and get a little concerned when you see forty, forty new positions?
If we were sort of pulling up.
Thirty-four full-time?
Look, I only gave you one.
If we were in the position of trying to create thirty to forty new a year, then I think that's, it is concerning. But I think it, it would depend on what they are.
Didn't we create about eighteen or twenty last year?
I think we probably did. I think that's right.
More than that, I think. That's what I was trying to pull up.
I think, I think the, the proposed was around thirty.
I thought it was around thirty. I think we cut it to about eighteen is what I thought. Something, call it twenty, eighteen or twenty.
That's my memory.
So, so that's what I'm saying. If you had thirty-four new full-time positions this year and so it's fifty-four in a span of two years, to me, that's alarming.
This is, one of those are.
Well, I still think you got to kind of look at it historically to see if we, if we had.
If we had hired the amount of people to kind of grow with the growth of the city and we had been kind of getting there along the way and then we have these new hires, then, then we're kind of outgrowing the city and our government. But if we hadn't and this is catching up, then it's less, that's how it's being presented is catching up.
It is, but let's also, we, let's go back and talk about that technology discussion again. You know, technology is designed to save manpower in a lot of cases as well.
We are going to be doing that with the training of munis because we're, we're all on munis now and I think that will definitely help too. But it, it's going to just help us define expenses better because as work orders are created, legitimate expenses for each department are going to become more and more transparent. Because right now, we're working off of percentages because we don't know exactly.
It was created, or created last year.
You didn't have a count at the bottom, but I just can't.
Okay.
It's about, that's, yeah.
Within five, ten percent.
So, I mean, she's pulling this up and this is, so twenty, are they full-time or do you know?
Um, let's see, there's only one.
But then when you pull up the end balance from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, the net difference was like two. I don't, yeah, I don't know.
Right. And, and there's no way to predict how that's going to happen each year because you don't know who's going to leave and, and kind of what shift there will be. But, you know, when you kind of look at this from two different perspectives, from, from the employee's perspective, from the maintenance department and from the utilities department, they'd rather have too many than not enough because they want to make sure that they can do all the things that they need to do. From the, from the perspective of, of paying the bills, you'd rather have everybody be a little too busy than have people sitting around without enough to do. And so it's really kind of finding whatever that, that balance is in, in that, those two numbers. You want, you want there to be enough people to do all the jobs that need to be done without working them to death, but at the same time, you want to make, you don't want to have idle hands on the job.
Right. Well, we're kind of restructuring things too. It's not, you know, customer service is not going, we don't have a call center and we don't have, we have customer service per department, but not everybody's trained in general knowledge for customer service. And that's, we're getting ready to start training. So there will be one line with rollover and, you know, those, those people will have general knowledge, will be able to use our, the software that we have to make sure that we can track citizens as they call. And if we have a couple of calls that are similar, that they can look in teams and find out, okay, well, in this department, this is an FYI that's going on there. So we're taking the employees that we have too without adding and trying to streamline some of these things as well to be more collaborative. But the people that we are adding and if we go through each department, it is, for police, it's because we do need more patrol. We need, you know, there are legitimate needs in, in here. If you take, you have public works too that's really defined by the level of service. And if Richard Johnson's here, he, he can tell you how, how much we increase every month in services. And so all of his positions are defined by population and customer service. So when people think it's all city hall, that's just not the case. It, it's for police, public works, utilities. That's the majority of it.
So let's talk about that then for a moment, public works.
Okay.
And the sanitation hoppers.
Just eliminate the need for, for the inmate.
Inmate program.
Inmate program.
Which I am strongly in favor of.
Why are we doing that?
Because it's inconsistent and, well, he can better.
Yeah, some of them.
We're better off with doing it this way.
Well, convince me. Here we are. Is there a secret out there?
No, he'll, he'll tell you. And he explained this in his presentation.
You know, the biggest issue is, is one, the, the workforce reliability has not been good. We've had, let's say, some incidents that have not been good using these inmates. Understand that, you know, in, in the way that we use them, they are going and doing residential service. So, and the, the biggest challenge that we've had is, for example, this year alone with weather conditions, we've had a number of days that inmates were not available to us. For example, if the winds are, are blowing at thirty miles an hour, we'll probably be told that they will not release the inmates tomorrow. So that means.
Who makes that decision?
The actual work camp does. They, you know, if the temperature gets above a certain temperature or below a certain temperature.
So we're not getting them from our jail?
No, no, no. This is coming from the state camp.
Tell them how far you travel. That's the best thing.
We pick them, have to pick them up in locks. We have the state camp, so.
And drop them off.
Yeah.
Y'all do that every single day?
Every single day.
Every day.
So you're saving some money there.
Mm-hmm. Well, and understand, also, we pay the state twenty dollars per inmate per day, plus we have to provide them a lunch during that shift. So I think those lunches are like five dollars. They're the hungry man meals, whatever. So, you know, and they're not exactly a hundred percent free. There's the twenty-five dollars per inmate plus the round-trip transportation there and back. And we've had some criminal activity that has not reflected very well on public works and there is a concern about a liability there. So that, that was, you know, that was a, a request through our sanitation and I do concur. We believe we can eliminate the inmates completely from the public works operation with, with three hoppers.
So this is their full salary that I'm looking at on here. This is not like over and above what we'd be paying for the use of inmates?
No, this is replacing that system and in the department, it includes everything.
There really is not much money at all there.
Correct.
Probably not much at all.
That's correct.
It's, it's not a completely financial wash, but it does, there is a pretty good offset there, Council President.
And the additional reliability and the reduced liability. It, it's a pretty.
When they can't come, then we have to work overtime.
Work overtime or we're pulling horticultural crews or whoever's available to go work as hoppers. And I'll kind of quick go through here.
So that's only three. So is that about how many a day we get from the county?
We kind of, it's one of those things is that that number changes day to day. We have gotten as many as, as, as six to ten in the past, but that's when we were doing a whole lot of, of recycling, sorting and things like that with the system that we've got in place. That, that requirement has, has greatly dropped. And we've had two assigned to go assist with the body shop and I'm not sure that's been the best use of anybody's time, inmate or otherwise. So this is just kind of cleaning up that process.
It doesn't, that's not much. I just didn't know why the change.
On the other jobs, you do see, and I don't know if the, the memo got, we did have a request for a new litter control position, but we did, I did send a Mendo after spending some time with Paul Merchant. He would prefer to eliminate that position if we could upgrade the gardener apprentices to just gardener ones and that would be an equal to or less than offset. In public works streets, the carpenter two.
Yep.
Is just again, being able to have more frontline services for construction and maintenance in the street department. As I recommended, the mayor, the mechanic is a position that if, if we need to start eliminating positions, would be the first one we'd recommend to eliminate from the request. That is that we have an individual that holds that classification today who's probably getting ready to retire, but he has not worked as a mechanic. And if he does choose to retire, which appears that there's a, a high likability to that, then we would have the ability to actually hire a mechanic in that, in that position that becomes available.
Can you go back to that gardener one? Where's that?
Trade the litter control for an increase in gardener apprentice to gardener one?
It's right above the sanitation hoppers.
Yeah.
I see the litter control. I just didn't see the other.
He's saying drop that and if we can increase gardener apprentice to gardener one.
Council President, I'll tell you what, this is what's happening in our horticulture. A gardener apprentice and a gardener one all does the exact same duties, meaning that they're working the greenhouses, they're propagating plants, they're doing the changeouts, they're doing the trimming, edging, mowing, everything. So we have two job functions that are, that they are a hundred percent fulfilling the same job functions, but they're graded out and, and positioned as, as two different pay scales and it's, the, the gardener apprentice is, most of them make less than ten dollars an hour. I think two of them were below ten and one was just slightly above. Is that correct?
How many apprentices did we have?
Three of them.
We have three.
So when.
There's a revolving door.
Yep, just, just convert those to gardener ones because that's really the job they're doing. And, and when I started with HR and discussing it with Jill, I said, well, let's, let's talk to the council about just looking at gardener apprentice and increasing the pay table to try to, to fix that. Because we've got some really good employees that are making nine dollars and forty-three cents an hour and they're doing the same job as the guy making eleven dollars and twenty-three cents an hour, who may have been on the job the same length of time. But the problem with looking at raising the pay scale for just one grade, then.
You got every grade that has that position.
Above it, that would, so the recommendation from HR as well as, as finance is that maybe they should just be moved to, to an existing grade that would take care of that. And that was Paul Merchant's request that if that could happen, the litter control, he'd be willing to have that one be eliminated from the budget.
Why did they put it in there? Did they not have a need for the litter control?
It's just.
If we're going to promote people and give them more money and they're going to do the same job, then why was the litter control physician put in, in the request to begin? See, either there's a need or there's not a need. And, and promoting somebody and paying them more, in this case, not every case, in this case, doesn't necessarily mean we're getting more taken care of. I mean, I'm listening to your recommendation, but did, you know, did, did we have a need for litter control? If we do, I mean, I'd be in favor of keeping somebody out there picking litter up. And if they didn't have a need, then.
I think.
Try to get put on there.
I, I think this was a position that was requested last year that didn't get filled. We've managed to, to take care. I think we've done a good job keeping our litter abated on our streets. And I think that the, the, the horticulture supervisor feels that, that if that money was invested in those gardeners apprentices upgrading the gardener ones, that that's, that gets you an outcome that continues to get them working even harder and, and that type of thing. And again, I'm, I'm going to, you know, take his recommendation in, in that, that we've managed to maintain the litter, clean up to an acceptable litter with the current resources. This is an area that we're, we're afraid we're going to lose good employees if we can't get them some compensation that's more reflective of the work they're doing. And it was not a, it's not a big jump from apprentice one to gardener one.
And, and Richard, you said if there was one in here that you were going to lose, it would be the fleet maintenance mechanic because you had somebody.
It's already been cut.
Right, it's already.
If you look at the far right column.
Okay.
See all the jobs have been cut.
Did you?
We, we.
Okay, I see it there. I'm sorry.
And, you know, the, the facility maintenance, that's, that is one of those areas that we are definitely stay behind in. And again, this was a request through our maintenance supervisors that to be able to add a second team would be a benefit. We did add one person this last year. So now we have a supervisor and a team that work together. And, you know, there's no doubt that building maintenance is a high demand, demand area and.
A lot of neglect.
A lot of the streets crews end up fulfilling a lot of building maintenance functions, you know. So, and again, that would be probably the next area that if, you know, that if that's too much of a request, one technician is, is better than none. They tend to work better in teams. They work out of a truck, but we can always gradually approach this and talk about the second team member the next year. And then the other one, and, and this is just an additional carpenter two, that's a skill position in streets. That's, it's a, it's a misnomer in our laboring. A carpenter two may be strong in masonry or concrete, wood and that type of thing. It is a tradesperson. And we really need to continue to add in that area. That's our biggest demand is just being able to repair things in-house that are associated with drainage, roadway, signs and that type of thing.
Very good. Do I have any more questions for Richard?
I don't. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate all you do. I know this is not fun.
I wish. No fun, Chris. Let me take a pause for a minute because we're kind of coming up on the end of our work session, but since we have department reports on the agenda, are there any of you department heads that want to come up and talk about your budget area again real quick? Any of you?
I'd like to come up and explain all of that.
Yeah.
And utilities, I mean, unless you'll have a problem with utilities.
No, I think we were good with all the utility positions.
I mean, is there just maybe one that you'd rather have?
I'd rather, I'd just want to give them an opportunity, I think.
I just, I didn't think that was, that wasn't anywhere we were thinking about cutting.
Not, not really, no. But I think it's, it's sometimes good to be educated on that.
How are y'all doing today?
Doing good.
Good.
I guess in there, I'm asking for three ones of going to be of replacement.
Yep.
So if you have any questions, I got something to pass around here. This is, just showing, can you pass them around please? This is showing what we've done. Just showing what we've done, what we've accomplished since 2016, 17, 18, kind of base why I'm wanting extra people.
Thank you, sir.
As you can see, just like this year so far as of October, we ran 38,000 feet of two-inch gas main. That's where the three-man crew. They've been working overtime, I don't know if you can see the overtime on there, it's went up drastically this year. We're having to do overtime every week. That's not going to do nothing but get worse. Right now, we've got 31 services that we're behind, say behind, within two weeks running, eight subdivisions that we got on the books. Three more were approved today, so that brings it up to 11. Our maintenance is zero. I got one person that's trying to accomplish all of the regulatory compliance and there's no way. As fast as we're growing, beans that we work all over Ballin County, there's just not enough people to keep up.
I think our recommendation was to give you the positions you were asking for because it sounded like you needed them.
Yeah, and there again, you can see with the gas meters that we're improving, we're increasing them by four, 500. It's going, easily going to cross 500 this year. And that's the increase of customers every year.
I mean, how many people are working on those?
We've got, I got 15 total, three men on each crew. Right now, the new ones I got this year are working on that crew is training and then they're, my goal is to move them into maintenance and then put the next new guy in there training also.
Are you having to sub anything out at all as far as repairs go?
Not as of right now, no sir. We need to, if I can't get the people. If I can get the people, that'd give me another crew to run services and another crew to do maintenance.
Do we have that overtime number, Jill?
For, for the gas department, like as of right now? I can pull it up real quick.
Looks like it was like 53,000 in 2017 and we're already at 65, over 65 this year. The only thing we're going to have to contract out is relocating or actually lowering the gas main on the right of way. That has got to be done. I don't know, I gave each one of y'all a booklet and it's had some pictures in it and it actually shows pictures of the right of way pipeline. That's, that's got to be put underground.
69,000 roughly.
In overtime just this year?
I'm not real sure.
Some of that's on-call and can't be prevented.
Yeah.
And there's a percentage of that that's never going to go away.
On-call will be, it was like 20,000 this year so far, so above that.
Still about two of those positions.
Well, it's too unloaded though. And I know that, I'm not saying we work them to death, but it's, you can't look at it just as salary because you're not...
The on-call is going to be there regardless.
Right.
You have to pay that once. Still significant though.
In addition to the money, I mean, you got men that are out there working themselves.
Well, they need a break.
Right now, the same guys, yes sir, they're working right now.
Yeah. I mean, that's part of the consideration too, is overworking our people.
That's every department, utilities for sure.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's not just a monetary consideration, you got people that you're talking about too.
Yeah, it kind of gets burnt out, you know, on a weekly basis.
I know the feeling.
Thank God I got some good guys and they volunteer, so they're alternating pretty well. It's just keeping up with the service, sir.
So they want the overtime?
Well, they would like to have it, but they got to have it. I mean, we got to do it. Like I said, right now I'm three weeks behind just doing services, not say behind, but that's my schedule, just to keep up. And that is working till dark every evening.
Where's this capital budget paid you down?
It's on page...
What page you looking at, Jack?
Page 47, but I don't know if that's...
You can borrow my glasses?
I'm in between prescriptions right now, I can't see rhythm or without.
You can put mine over yours. The two minutes of paper I just handed you out here, the gas meters, inspections and the leak calls is all done off of one truck. I got two men in that truck every day. If one of them calls in sick, it is just, it's unbearable. And then on the leak calls, if it's something that we have to repair, I have to pull them off of either the maintenance crew, or I say the maintenance crew, the main crew or the service crew.
So I'll tell you my own opinion, that you're in, you're out, your budget's pretty reasonable. I don't think that we've ever come in here and just, you know, ripped it apart. I appreciate that.
I agree.
So I'll ask you this, is there anything in here that you think that you might could do without? Is there just any? I hate to ask that, but I guess I got to ask you that.
Oh yeah, that's fine. I spent a lot of hours trying to go through here and trying to see what I could, cannot use.
I don't really see anything, just to be honest with you, that jumps off the page at me.
No, sir.
I worry that I can't find anything.
I'm dropping one of the big trucks and replacing with two small trucks because I could get an extra crew and that's going to be almost the same amount of money.
Jimmy got to find something, it's ridiculous.
It's probably going to be, you know, 20,000 more, but it's going to be worth it.
Well, the biggest items are those lower in the gas lines, you've got to do that.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's a third of it, really is a third of the budget, it's just, it's those two items, so.
Yeah, that's carrying over.
Mm-hmm, yes.
It's carrying over from last year, so it's just needing the people to...
To do it.
Right.
Yeah, and it just goes up every year. To get somebody back there is going to be the job.
What is the mini X?
It's just a mini excavator. We have one out split between three departments.
Sorry.
That's a good abbreviation there. That's some shorthand right there.
Got a shorthand somehow.
What's his last year capital budget for that department, Jill?
Last year's capital?
Yeah, for gas.
That column's in the original one, that...
Is it, is it in the original one? I may, yeah, I may have had to hide that one because they get so ridiculously long that...
Yeah, I understand. Yeah.
Mr. General, so you're in the capital section right now?
What, what are you...
Just wondering what the total request was in 2018 that we approved.
Oh, okay. See if there's some hidden columns, I can look at it on here.
Next page, two. On our electric.
Probably not this page.
Sir.
Here it is. It's got to be capital going there, we should see.
Doesn't look like capital purchase.
There's no, it doesn't look like there's any hidden columns, but what I can tell you on the 2018 approved that is requesting again is 422,414.
That rolled over.
Right.
That's the rollover amount, you know, the total, what's what?
Let me go back and, from the last year's budget.
Start with...
Just untie that column if you pull up this budget and just unhook that one.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, we're not in ones, I'm just pulling up last year's budget to see for the total.
Utilities, gas.
It looks like it was 459, 464.
This doesn't break it down, this is just the approved rollovers, it doesn't show you.
It was, it was only 459 and we rolled over 422.
Or maybe we spent, maybe 459 is what we spent in the 422, maybe it was eight something.
That's kind of what I'm thinking.
I think it's 836 or something like...
Eight 70 and then we did about half of it, about half of it had to be rolled over.
Yeah. Whatever was approved in 18 that didn't get done, that they're re-requesting is that 442,914.
And the 459 or whatever is what did get done.
Right.
Y'all have any other questions about the gas?
No more? Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Oh, a bunch of people getting up now.
Here we go.
You should have run in a good minute, I really come.
Thank everybody, take a chair.
You're a good check.
Since where is this?
You're on the agenda.
Yeah, and I knew it may come up in the agenda portion, but still there's a little bit more. So here.
Thank you.
I think there's two.
Thank you.
Uh-oh. Maybe I've got to keep one. You've seen it, you've got it.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't have enough.
I've got, I've got, I've got that on my computer.
And then you have this too. Take this and pass it around to you so we can get whatever, I'm going to keep that alone.
There you go.
We can share this.
Which one you want to just talk about first?
Let's talk about the events, just because it is on the agenda tonight.
Yep.
Just roll through it quickly. We talked about getting it approved in advance like we did last year because there are items we need to go ahead and order. Okay. I don't think there's anything too surprising there. Couple of you have asked me about the lights, tree lighting being different, but you know that was transferred into electric, the electric department. So that's why it dropped so much. But I did notice on the resolution for tonight, it talked about approve, the exact wording is, it refers to approving the events budget, but one thing I talked to a couple of you about, but not all of you, is that the promotion of the events is in this tourism, communications, advertising portion. So if we approve the events, but without the promotional part of it, we won't be able to advertise to get people here. And this is really to promote shopping around the holidays and things like that. And if I could break it up, I would, but it doesn't really make sense to break out that portion of it.
So if I'm looking at that second page, what line is that in particularly?
So in particular, we're looking at this, under the tourism, the Coast 360 video production, hospitality, those. Unfortunately, I mean, the Coast 360 is something we have to do all at once. And then the video production, that $10,000 is for four videos throughout the course of the year. So we could pull out a portion of that, but I don't know how much the first one will cost for the holiday video.
And so the extent of this advertising, as you will, under this tourism column will be, as you described it to me, this would be at the, at the Gulf and is there, you know, anywhere else that it's going to be spent?
Hotel rooms, condos, there's print ads, it'll be distributed.
Other than at the coast, so what you just said right there, hotel rooms, print ads.
Right, so...
All, all at the coast or?
No, the print ads go throughout the state.
Okay.
The videos are aimed at the Gulf Coast area. There's a map of where all they go, but it's pretty extensive. So it reaches, you know, condos, hotels.
The only thing I'm a little bit concerned with is that, you know, if we had it out right now, October is a very, very busy month down there. In fact, it's become one of the most popular months of the year there. November is a very slow month and December is even slower. And if we spend all our money in those slow months, I don't know, we'll reach somebody, but you know, where you're at, in July, you're at 99% occupancy down there. I would say in October, if I had to put a number on it, you're at somewhere around 80% occupancy down there.
Right.
For most weeks, like this week shrimp festival, but then in November, that dropped down to 20%.
Well, we're really approving this for next year too though, so we might miss this for twelve months.
It's for twelve months.
But you'll be hitting it for all next year though.
Yeah, but the budget starts October 1.
But this is printed material per event. It's not just about that regional stuff she's doing, it's per month, per event.
Right, but what I'm saying is, you're saying since it's October 1st, if we're advertising for the holidays, we're kind of behind on that for this year, which is correct, but we'll be ahead of it for 2019.
I got you.
And we're ready to go, but that holiday one, what we were thinking of doing is like a 15-second spot, a shorter spot. And we're also going to use this on social media and we can push it out in a lot of different ways, not just through Coast 360. But they'll be our primary push for all of this. And we're testing this and I think, Jack, you'd asked me, you know, data.
Yeah, I want to, ROI on this, but it's a lot. I mean, in the grand scheme of our budget, 65 million, is it a lot? No, but is it, is it really going to drive people here? And then you got to ask yourself, well, is it going to drive people here? Are they going to spend money downtown? Are even hotel rooms available that time of year? It's a busy time for us here and our hotels are full and we're limited, so how much more do we make off of that?
I think this is targeting the, the family that's in town for a beach vacation and they need a day break from sitting on the beach and trying to figure out what to do.
Yeah, I exactly understand what it's targeting them, I'm just wondering, is it, is it worth it though? I said, and I told, like I told you, we could try it once, but I'd like to know, you know, to measure it.
And we are, and I told you, we met with, you know, Dr. Cummings about tracking that information and the data is really difficult to track. We are getting some interns here during arts and crafts to help us develop a tracking mechanism just to see, but we can't separate out the sales tax revenue or the revenue by event in that way. Jennifer and I have struggled to do. It can be done though, USA can definitely help us determine what the impact is.
We can just look at our monthly financials and see if there's a bump too.
Yeah, and that's what...
In simplest, in simplest terms, you can do that.
Right, and that's what we've been talking about. So we will do that again and compare it that way, but we can't get as specific as I'd like yet.
Shirley, what is the miscellaneous contract writing services?
So I am thinking that that's something we're not going to need because you approved that contract already.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was...
So I think that can...
I'd like to drop that in because I'd ask that too.
I think that can come out.
In the resolution, is this attached to the resolution, Lisa?
I can add this, I can add the tourism, you can add that.
Okay, that's right, because you said it was excluded, so.
Right, that's why I wanted to come up.
We wanted to have that communication, advertising, PR, and we can put an exhibit in there and then strike that out if we had to.
Do, okay.
36,000.
That'd be 36, yeah. Remind me, Jenny, we get up there to, to make an addendum and add this, okay, to the first page. I think it's a good idea to enter into the minutes, we always remember what we did, this is... I think it's a good idea to enter into the minutes, we'll do what we did, this is, this would be maybe exhibit one and two.
And then when you're already.
Yeah, my wife should bring that up, Shirley.
Do y'all have any other questions about, it's pretty straightforward.
Am I not having questions about? I like it.
The only.
We got one change.
The personnel thing, I just wanted to go over this position, and Phillip's here. Have y'all met Phillip? Everybody's met, you saw him at the last meeting.
Yes, I introduced him. A couple of meetings ago.
Right.
I thought he was an attorney. Longest time, he's quiet, I was worried.
Well, then you knew he wasn't an attorney then.
Right, there you go.
Extremely nervous.
So we've spent some time together and with, I've worked with Philip, Philip and Darby, and one of the things Darby and Donnie talked about a lot last year, and I've learned since I've been here, is that our welcome center, I mean, that's the hub of activity for Fair Hope. All of our visitors walk in through the welcome center. We have around, we're estimating around twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand people that come through there. We have great volunteers there, but it's inconsistent. The museum right now is providing backup to the welcome center as they can, which has not been that effective. It's, it's been very difficult on them because they're pretty crowded, and we talked, I talked with some of you about, you know, museums aren't always crowded, but most of the time it's very crowded and there's a lot going on. The museum is also capturing a lot of people that will go into the welcome center and they don't, they can't get any information, so they come into the museum and they can't really spend the time with the tourists or visitors here to give them information because they're giving tours and they're working with docents and volunteers, and that's another big management, heavy lift, I would say, at the museum that they have, is managing those docents and working with those volunteers, but for the, just the museum, not for the welcome center. The welcome center's a whole extra, extra, I guess, thing they take on, responsibility, and it's not, it's not working well for them. The museum, it's difficult, they can't really manage it. They can't manage both, so we do, we have to figure out how to, how to manage that welcome center and give the, give our visitors the welcome that we think they deserve and need and provide the information, train the volunteers, have a more formal system for volunteer training there. Just, we think we can do, improve it a ton with very little investment. I think what we're asking for is like a thirteen dollar an hour position here for this. But this is a snapshot of what they would do, and it provides consistency, it provides backup, it allows the museum to do the museum's job, which is to provide tours and history, and they're going to be doing a lot more outreach and education with our schools and visitors, and, I mean, Phillip has some great vision moving forward.
Satellite exhibits, which is going to require me to leave property quite a bit to be able to do the installations. Are we on?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll say again, we are planning to do satellite exhibits in surrounding facilities and maybe even cities around, that surround Fair Hope. So this will require me to leave property quite a bit and will not be able to pay the attention that is really needed to the, the welcome center.
Jimmy, I see that you and Robert is under council edits, so you guys had cut that. It was a nine twenty, it's a nine dollar an hour job as budgeted here. On nothing, it looks like, on the, that's pretty much on the low end. So can you tell me what you guys were thinking at that time?
I think our, our thoughts at that time were, you know, it wasn't a, wasn't a real expensive position, it wasn't a whole lot to cut, but we thought it could possibly be managed with just a more coordinated effort, I guess, more of a, just a better tracking system to, what it seemed like was to train them and then make sure that they were on schedule and understood when they needed to be there, where they needed to be, make sure it was always staffed, and we just thought a more detailed spreadsheet or something to track who's there, when they need to be there would probably suffice. So that, that was just our, our logic. But I mean, I'm not adamantly opposed to the position or anything, it's not, not that much money.
And if you've done, if you've done volunteer management, you know that it is, it's inconsistent, and a lot of times people don't show up, and when that's in a high-traffic time, I mean, it's, it's a problem. Having somebody that we know is in charge, you know, they'll be there, that's their job to be there, I think is, is much more professional and something that we need, and then they also need to train these volunteers, whoever they are. I think that we have, we have great volunteers that have been there a long time, but there are also other people that would like to have the opportunity to volunteer there, but we need some formal training, we need someone to track them, we need, we need a more formalized, I think we would get a lot more value out of formalizing a volunteer coordinator position throughout the city. And you see other things we have here, too, like, you know, lighting of the trees, girls' night out, things we do at the downtown merchants, arts and crafts, and there are a lot of needs for extra volunteers on top of our typical volunteers or volunteer services throughout the city. So, you know, Easter bunny, Santa pictures, all those things require somebody to be there. So having someone consistent to be sure they're there for all of these things, I mean, we're a very event-heavy city, and we love that about our city, but relying only on volunteers to, to manage a facility like this, I think, is probably not the best route.
And you think that you can find someone for nine dollars an hour to, to do all of the things that you've just stated that their, that their job would require if I looked at this volunteer coordinator position?
I think we could find someone for between nine and thirteen an hour. That's very good, that would love to do this job.
You know, I'm having some indirect experience with the welcome center and all the events that we do there, just kind of the traffic that comes through there. I, I don't think it's a bad idea to have somebody there on a, on a, somebody that we pay on a regular basis. But I wonder if it's some, if, if there's some way to make it a part-time position as opposed to a full-time position, because if you're coordinating part-time with volunteers, now, there might be times where overtime is necessary for that part-time person because you have a volunteer cancel. I don't, I don't know, but I, the volunteers that we have there, that I've dealt with over the years, are some of the most wonderful people that I've met here in the city. But you're right, though, anytime you base anything on full volunteer service, there is some liability issues that come with that.
I do want to point out that because of that new, you know, rule with the part-time, they cannot work over nineteen hours, and when you're having a lot of events, and you never know when those months are going to happen, I don't think we, we would, they're not going to be sitting around twiddling their thumbs. We'll, we'll make sure that they're, they're busy and helping the museum and, and do other things, but the, that's going to be a huge liability. From now on, we've got to, when we hire a part-time, we have to make sure that they do not work over nineteen hours. It's going to be a big deal.
And I've tried to spend a good bit of time inside the welcome center and just watch what goes on in there. I've been in there in times where no one's in there, and I end up just talking with people that come in. You know, they just have questions about Fair Hope, and that's where they go. I mean, that's where we go, and then it's empty. Sometimes it's empty, sometimes there's someone in there, and that is sweet as can be, but, you know, may say, well, go to this restaurant, or, you know, that's my favorite, or don't eat there, or what, you know, you just don't, there's no, we have to train them, we have to kind of, it's our responsibility as a city, I mean, and tourism is so huge here, and, and we want our tourists to be happy and informed and, you know, to, that's, this is where we welcome them, it's our welcome center. So I think it's a small, a very small investment, you know, for that.
I'll look at that some thought. I've never had a complaint about it, but then it's not a lot either. The benefits are almost as much as the salary for that position.
Well, and there wouldn't be really any complaints in that situation from citizens, there'd be people from out of town that wouldn't know to contact you.
That's true.
That's true, too.
And the other, the only other thing I'll point out that is on here that I think is a really important note is, you know, having a way for visitors to sign up for this Epper Bridge, because if they're in town, especially for large events, we want to make sure that they are getting emergency notices from us, and then when they leave here, we want to make sure they're getting notices about things we're doing, so they'll come back. So it gives us a way of staying in touch, which we haven't had before.
I mean, can, say, you or someone else from the Nick Center staff pitch in to help with that training, if those things are at vital right now? Maybe they are, I mean, that's, maybe that's what's going on now.
Yeah, I think that's kind of how it's been done in the past.
That's what I thought.
And me being right next door, it should be, I should be able to help out with that as well, the training.
Well, let's, we're going to have to adjourn, we got a council meeting starting in two minutes, so let's go ahead and adjourn Eric.